Six hundred dollars last year. The technology is up from three hundred and fifty last year to five hundred dollars. And the less funds under total foundation, the one million six hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred forty dollars, that is a ten meal equivalent on our district abnorm taxes. And we have to, in order to participate in the foundation program, we have to contribute that portion of our local taxes. And so if you'll notice, it's backed out of there. So the total that we do receive from the state for foundation is fourteen million seventy-three thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars. I did add the enrollment comparison from 2020. The projected enrollment for, at August twenty-seventh, twenty-one was twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-three hundred ninety-six. And August of 2020, our enrollment was twenty-three ninety-three. So we're actually at three students total overall for the system. The next page is gonna be a breakdown of each of the schools with their grades listed. Abbeville Elementary, and this is, their school is pre-K through six. And the numbers that we earn teacher units from doesn't include our pre-K. So the numbers of the ADM or the enrollment doesn't reflect the pre-K numbers. But they had an ADM of three hundred fifty-five point fifteen. Earned one million nine hundred three thousand five hundred forty-four dollars with a projected enrollment of three forty-five. And last year it was three fifty-one. And the bottom section is also as a breakdown of the number of personnel at that school. They have a total of fifty-three. The next page is Abbeville High School. Their ADM was three hundred and twenty. Their enrollment was three eighteen. And in August of 2020, it was three hundred and twenty. And they have a total of forty-one staff. And Hedlin Elementary, like I said again, it doesn't include, the numbers don't include the pre-K count. But their ADM was seven hundred forty-six point four, which earned them fifty point thirty-eight teacher units, eight point three million eight hundred seventy-seven thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars, with a total enrollment of seven seventy-six. And August of 2020, it was seven forty-seven. Total personnel eighty-one point five. Hedlin Middle School, their earned units, their ADM was five seventy-seven point forty-five. And their total units, thirty-four point twenty-nine, equals two million seven hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars, with an enrollment of five seventy-five. And August of 2020 was five eighty-seven. And their total staff, forty-eight point five. Hedlin High School, their ADM was four hundred point ninety-five. Their total units is twenty-five point eighty-three. Bringing a total of foundation program to two million eighty-seven thousand three hundred and two dollars, with an enrollment of three eighty-two. And their enrollment August 2020 was three eighty-eight. Total employees is forty-two. Anybody got any questions on this section? The next page, I don't have it tabbed, but I will, I wanna just mention this. This is a description of all of our long-term debt for the system. Our total payments each year is one million three hundred eight thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars twenty-seven cents. And we do have three that will be maturing in twenty-five. So after twenty-five, we will have four hundred seventeen thousand extra for whatever. We may need to refinance, look at that now. But the one, the very last one is a new one this year for five years, and that's the must-go delights for the softball-baseball field. And the last tab page is the proposed annual budget. This is where all the money is put into the system and by fund source, by school, by revenues and expenditures. Our beginning, general fund balance is projected to be two million six hundred thousand. And this is one change that I made from the last budget hearing, because after looking at the way the financials are for August, we're, we're ending a little bit better than projected. So I did raise that from two point four, two point two to two point six. So that's a positive. No changes in the revenues at all. That's PIA, starts revenues. PIB through, um, PID, I believe this is where it's the total of the revenues. PIE, total revenues for the system and the general fund is twenty-one million eighty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. The next section is gonna be on PIF, is our expenditures. And it's broken out by categories of instructional services, instructional support services, operation and maintenance, auxiliary services, which would be transportation and CMP, general admin services. We have our capital outlay. If you'll notice, our debt service, it would match the spreadsheet that I provided, the one point three million. Other expenditures, the total, all expenditures is twenty-one million four hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents, which would bring a projected end in balance September thirtieth, the twenty-two, to be two million two hundred twenty-four thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars thirty-seven cents. And that's right at one and a half months' reserve. Our required amount for one month is one million six hundred forty-six thousand. So we'll be, we'll be above that. The next section in this is the P two A exhibits. And what that is, is by call center, or by each school, or by bus shop, or debt service. There's a call center at the very top. The ver, the first page is Abbeville Elementary. And it gives their call center number, and it breaks down all the expenditures for that school. So you can tell what we spend in the category of instructional services, or support services, operations and maintenance, and auxiliary services. And that's gonna be, and it just follows through every category of expenditures for each call center that we have in the system. The last sheet in here is if anyone has any questions or any comments that need to be added, is, would be the last, the response to review or the proposed annual budget. Anybody got any questions? I did add a sheet for the board members of the staff. Uh-huh, got a question?
My name is Willie, and we were concerned about volunteer coaches, and I know I got in a little bit late. We're concerned about volunteer coaches, uh, pay for them. They work very, very hard. And they put in a hard day's work, and at our school, they deserve something. And I mentioned Miss Beasley and the other board members, is there anything in the budget for them?
No, sir, we don't have anything for volunteers, just regular coaching supplements. Volunteers we have, they sign a form for no, no compensation now. That's the board where to vote.
Now, can the booster club, if they choose to, I mean, is that...
The booster clubs can. Now, if they vote, the club votes to give that, in the booster clubs at the local school.
And it has to be approved by the board.
Right. Now, in that case, we can.
Thank you.
Well, let me add a little something, uh, Mr. Beasley. Since the, uh, volunteer coaches, they add a whole lot of experience to the table, some much more than the employees. Could we at least give, uh, the major sports, one volunteer, at least enough of his expenses of traveling back and forth? Could we, could we do that, not, not put it on the booster club?
Right.
I'm just saying, since we do want a great program, and you're gonna help to pay for a great program. I, I'm, all I'm saying is that, I'm strongly suggesting that we take one volunteer. And we at least fund, and we at least fund his expenses, or her expenses.
Now, if you remember, uh, last year, you all agreed to that, so that if they have travel, and they're a volunteer, that their travel, um, and any kind of meals would be paid for.
But it wasn't, not round the board.
That was last, that was last...
But I'm saying it wasn't. It wasn't, not round the board. It didn't, it didn't take effect. It never came, not, not for all the system volunteers, not, not, not for them. So a, all I'm saying, that we did agree to it, and let's, let's take a look at it this year, to make sure we, we do all, everybody, you know?
And so what I'll do is those principals and those head coaches will need to be responsible, because we're not gonna know every, um, 'cause they may ride the bus a lot of times, you know, when they're, when they're traveling away. So they'll have to be in charge of getting those expenses to us.
Thank you.
And we can sell them.
Yeah, we have a whole one that they can fill out.
That's all that I have.
Okay. That's a good question. So we decided we'll begin at five o'clock. Does anybody need a word, or you've got a word? Does anybody need anything to drink? What's up here?
Oh, yeah.
I see.
I didn't look at it.
That's all they do. All the time. I saw a man.
Yeah, I know about it.
He jumped up and grabbed the police and got a ballgame. We told him. He had a hat here one night, right here. Yeah, we told him.
That's what I'm saying.
Since I don't hear both here at once now, I think I was lying on.
So we don't, we don't have to understand that we have one, two, two, two. Top students themselves. Oh, my God, the town first. Come tell you what to do. You've been here with your show. And when you're ready. I don't talk to you.
All right, it's, uh, little at five o'clock. We will get started. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to open us in prayer?
Amen.
Go ahead, Ms. Park.
Let's pray. Lord, just bless our community, bless our food, bless the ones that slay us, Lord. Lord, as a farming community, just bless this community as we're out of our control. Just be with each farm, be with them, give them the knowledge. Lord, thank you for being so good to our county and to our state. Lord, thank you to citizens of this county. Lord, thank you to Board of Education and all the workers. Just be with each one of them as they make decisions every day. Lord, just forgive me for what I say and accomplish all these days. And thank you so much for being so good to me and my family. Stay with me, rest, and die next.
Amen. Please, please.
My pledge, please, is to fly on the United States of America and to the brother from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like the calls were ordered, the Henry County Board of Education regular meeting Thursday, September the ninth, two thousand twenty-one, at five o'clock PM at the Headland High School auditorium. Let the record show that all the board members are present physically. No one via conference call. Item number one, recommend the board approve the written agenda. Motion by Mr. Watson, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wiggins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Item two, recognition of speakers from the floor. Uh, we have the list here. We have about thirteen speakers, it looks like, uh, that want to speak, just some of the, the ground rules. Uh, I don't need to say this, but we're all friends, we're all neighbors, and, uh, we all have opinions, and each opinion is valid, and each opinion is valuable. And we appreciate your attendance here to, to speak your mind concerning whatever issue that you want to bring before the, uh, before the school board. Uh, I, I just ask that everything remain, uh, civil, and as we, uh, as we move forward, and as everybody has an opportunity to speak their mind, that we respect each other's time, uh, those that are speaking, and, uh, that we allow each person to express their views. By, uh, policy, uh, each speaker is entitled to two minutes that you can, uh, speak to the school board. The school board is not, uh, required to interact during that, uh, that two-minute, uh, speech. This is a time for you to come and let your views on to us. We do not have to answer or respond to any questions at that time. Those, if you have questions that need answering and those types of things, uh, that's when you'll need to go to the Superintendent of Education, Mr. Easley, so that, uh, and then we can, uh, we can look at it then. So, uh, what you'll need to do is, uh, when I call your name, you'll come up to the podium here and, uh, state your name, if you would, for the, uh, record, and, uh, then we'll, uh, we'll start the clock running, and you'll have two minutes to, to say what you want to say. Uh, first one. Uh, the Stanford's. Mr. and Ms. Stanford.
Good evening. My name is John Stanford. I'm retired IEM, and I'm retired IAM. Now, if you want to know about computers, if I want to know, I would either ask an electronic engineer or a software engineer. I would not ask a doctor. Okay? I don't know anything about health. I do know that the medical community urges people to get vaccinated and wear masks. I think that children are gifts from God. I think that we need to protect them in every way possible. And since I don't know anything about medicine, maybe you will listen to me. You don't, if you won't listen to the medical community, maybe you'll listen to me because I don't know anything about it. This is my wife, Trinette Stanford. Trinette have a bachelor's degree in nursing, a master's degree in nursing, and she is a certified nurse practitioner, and she practiced for many years. So she knows about medicine, and maybe you will listen to her.
See, that's why I love them. Okay, like you said, I'm a nurse practitioner. And I want to encourage to, uh, I want to encourage everybody to wear masks because that's the least we can do in order to protect our children, all right? We have had over seven hundred thousand deaths in the United States because of COVID, and I have worked for forty years in the medical field, and there have been other infections that could have been pandemics, but they were squashed. They were quelched because of, because of immediate treatment. And the only way we're going to get rid of this, this pandemic is that everybody does their part. Now, my question to you, are you going to be part of the problem or part of the solution? And the least we can do is wear a mask in order to protect our children, in order to protect ourselves, and to protect those that have to go home to somebody who's vulnerable, all right? Because you don't know who may be going through cancer treatment. You don't know who may have, um, have had an organ transplant, and they need to be protected. You know, we are not, we are not an island, and most of us in here, hopefully, are Christians, and God has called us to care about one another. We have gotten to a point where we are caring about ourselves and about our rights and not thinking about other people's rights. But this is a time, this is a matter of life and death. We have had family members to die, and some of those deaths have been preventable, all right? And if you just wear a mask, that's all we're asking, that you, that you wear a mask and that the students wear masks, because you want the kids to stay in school. You don't want the, you don't want the schools to shut down because of un, unquenched infections. Schools all over the country are closing down because there are so many students with the infection. We don't want that here. So the least we can do is require a mask. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is, uh, Mrs. Heather Paris. And I, I would, I would ask you, and I should mention this to start with too, but to please address the comments to the school board.
That's fine, that's who I'm here to talk to. I wanted to tell you thank you for continuing with the mask mandate. I'm so glad that our Board of Education is going with facts and not feelings. I understand from Eric Mackey, the State Superintendent, that this week we had ten thousand students out with COVID. Last year, our highest was four thousand. I understand that at the beginning of the week, we had five hundred kids out with COVID, and this most recent week, we had thirty because of the mask. And I can't believe anybody would be here to argue now against the masks. I can't imagine that there are parents that send their kids to school to get an education, and then they teach their children to ignore the medical experts that are trying to keep us safe. I can't believe there are people taking their kids to church and teaching them to love their neighbor and then doing, won't even wear a mask to protect their neighbors. I'm so disappointed in some of our community members. I really thought better of a lot of you. I really hope and pray that the board will continue to follow facts and the data and science and keep protecting our kids and not make this a political conspiracy nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, next is, uh, Ms. Brenda Carlson.
As you know, I'm Brenda Carlson, and I'm here because my ten-year-old grandson has spina bifida, and he has a shunt for hydrocephalus. If he, he can't get a shot yet, he's ten, he's got two more years. If he gets it, this could cause a brain infection to him. And that, I don't think anybody wants that on their conscience, that they would give this to our children who are younger than twelve. They have, they, they... I ask that y'all please follow the stats and not self-serving politicians who are against this. We all know what the doctors are saying. And our schools are not large enough to separate six feet. We don't have that much room. And besides, the kids want to socialize, they want to be close to each other. And if we put masks on them, they can't, we don't have to worry about that. And you know a mask is not a ball and chain, it's a piece of fabric on for your face. This is just... And our school board has an obligation to protect our children. Obligation to give them an education and to protect their safety. And if we go optional mask-wearing, we are giving anti-maskers the chance to dictate our health to us. No one should dictate our health but our doctors. And no freedom is absolute. And the right and freedom to choose to do something starts when the exercise of that choice threatens the health and safety of others. But thank you for listening, and I hope you'll make the right decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mrs., uh, Ms. Nikisha Brown.
Hello, I'm Keisha Brown. Um, I have two kids that attend helping in school. One is a senior, one is in ninth grade. They both have underlying conditions. I have one that has, um, chronic asthma, one that has a chronic kidney disease. Um, they have both been vaccinated, but they still wear their masks. Um, scientific research has documented evidence that wearing masks reduce transmission. I've reviewed the data from the University of Southern California and the Mayo, um, and the Mayo Clinic. Both are respected institutions that, that are in the medical field. This is not about personal rights or the convenience. This is about the health and welfare of our students, the faculty, and the families that they go home to. I just want us to continue the mask mandate, the requirements. I don't want to have to sit at home and teach my kids because I can't do the job that our teachers do here. Um, we need to keep our students face-to-face in, in school, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next is Ms., uh, Barbara Jackson.
Hello, I'm just pretty much piggybacking off of Keisha Brown, she's our sister. And, um, I think it is a good idea that the mask, um, is mandatory until, you know, the COVID gets better. And I, I just kind of feel like some that don't want this mask to be wearing, they haven't lost a family member. They haven't encountered some things that we have. They haven't lost a sister like we have. They haven't had the whole family, pretty much having to go to the hospital like we have. And as, as far as the kids, you know, they went to school not wearing masks, but when they sent them home, if there was a child there that did have it and they came in contact with it, they're bringing it back home to the family, and they're getting sick, um, with the COVID. So, you know, just pretty much simple, I, I don't see what the problem is with wearing a mask. I have a grandson that has asthma. He wears his, if he feel uncomfortable or he can't breathe, he step to the corner, pull his mask off for a few minutes or whatever, and put it back on. I mean, I just think that it's a good idea that we do keep the mask on.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Willie Tullis.
My name is Willie Tullis, and I'm happy to be here today. And, uh, I want to thank all the concerned parents, staff, people, and everybody that's showing up here today. Uh, I'm not a parent of a kid that's in Headland High School. I'm an alumni at Headland High School, and I am a proud taxpayer of Henry County, so I have a right to be here also. Um, I have not always agreed with our superintendents or our board members, but I, I agree with them a hundred percent about what they're doing now. This is needed. I support you all, and there's a lot of people right here that do. We support what you're doing. Uh, we voted Ms. Beasley in the office. I didn't know who Ms. Beasley was. I didn't even vote for Ms. Beasley. I did, she knows it. And if, if I would have knew what type of person she is now, I probably would have. I've gotten to know her. She is a good, decent, caring person, and that has did some great things along with the board. And so, like I said, I haven't always agreed with her. There's one up there right now I don't ever agree with. His name is E.D. But that's a tough name for a man. But he'll get me after this one. Um, but Mr. Davis does a good job also. Um, the kids are all of our kids. They're all my kids, they're next door to my mom. I see them on the field when I go out to practice, we send them to supermarkets, in the weight room. Okay?
Mr. Tullis, that's, that's two minutes.
Okay, I have two other people I think that I'm cheering for.
Yeah, there, it, it, but we, you, we, each person can only go, can only go two minutes.
Can I have their minute?
All right, is, is, are, are they on the list?
Yes.
Uh...
Martha? And Bobby?
Will you speak for you? All right, two more minutes then.
I'll wrap it up short.
What was your name, ma'am?
Barbara Coleman.
Okay, go ahead.
About four minutes.
Yeah, okay. They turned their... I want to lighten things up a little bit, yeah. I want to have some fun with you. Uh, the kids are all of our kids. And, 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 and what they do in school and what they take to school from the community to just spread and then bring back home, just like Ms. Jackson said, we all will be affected by that. And we do want our kids to be safe. And we trust the board, the principals, and you guys because you're looking at the signs. And I think you guys are making the best decision that, for the information that you do have. Um, and, 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 and we commend you, and, and I hope that everybody will consider why you're here and what your issues may be with the mask or without the mask, and, um, hopefully, we can be on one page and get through this thing. It's all of our problems. And I pray for a heaven round tomorrow night. We gonna need some help tomorrow night, we have a good team, but I think we're gonna be okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And thanks for letting me share.
Okay, so that got Mr. Willie Tullis, that got Ms. Martha Tullis, and Ms. Barbara Coleman Davis. Uh, next up is Ashley Bradley.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ashley Bradley, and I graduated from Headland High School, and I also have a son here. I also a healthcare worker, I'm a nurse for sixteen years, and my experience with COVID is I have had COVID before, and also my son has had COVID before. And I'd just like to say, you know, that I recommend the kids to continue to wear the mask, and I also recommend, um, in the near future for the schools to get the rapid tests for the kids. Um, it's hard for one kid to be exposed and not having COVID, but just being exposed and missing school for ten days. If you have rapid testing at school, you could actually test them and say, okay, no, you know, they don't have COVID, they can continue to do their work. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, uh, thank you, Ms. Bradley. Next is, uh, Mr. Charlie Teague.
I prepared a statement, so it'll be easier if I just read it. My goal for speaking today is concern parent regarding the decision to mandate masking. I'm also speaking from the perspective of a healthcare worker with an intimate knowledge and experience in dealing with COVID-19. I'm the ACNO, or the Assistant Chief Nursing Officer for one of our local hospitals, and the COVID Incident Commander for that facility. CDC and the World Health Organization, in cooperation with the National Institute of Health, recommend vaccination and masking as the best method slash prevention and reduction of the spread of COVID-19. Since a large portion of the students in question are not eligible for vaccination due to their age, masking should be the primary form of prevention implemented by the Henry County Schools. My rationale for this recommendation is as follows. While children have statistically experienced fewer hospitalizations and negative health outcomes, they still contribute to the overall spread of the disease. Given the evidence below, uh, and I have a, a graph I'll read out to you. The CDC's updated guidance, uh, recommends that universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, visitors, uh, to K through twelve schools regardless of their vaccination status being masked. In January twenty-one, elementary through high school-aged children accounted for twenty-nine point one percent of all COVID infections in the U.S. As of September third, that percentage has risen forty-five point eight percent. The RNaO rate, uh, for COVID-19 in the U.S. is five point eight. The RNaT rate, uh, for COVID-19 in the U.S. is five point eight. It's the average number of additional people that one infected patient is likely to infect. This becomes a true emergency. While children and adolescent adolescents are not likely to have negative outcomes, they can spread COVID to their parents and grandparents who are not likely to, who are more likely to have significant risk for hospitalizations and increased mortality. This risk escalates proportionally if they are unvaccinated. The current vaccination rate for Alabama is thirty-nine point one percent as of the third of September. Mortalities in Alabama in twenty-twenty-one have reached five thousand two hundred and thirty-five. Masking has proven effective in the preventing of spread of COVID by, by acting as a barrier for exhale of large droplets.
That's, that's your two minutes, sir.
All right. I sent this information to Ms. Beasley and it has evidence-based, uh, sightings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Teague. Next is Shannon Sampson.
Good evening. Um, as stated, my name is Shannon Sampson. I'm here as a concerned citizen, a grandparent of two grandchildren who are in the school system. And not only that, but also go home to a family that has two infants in the household. One is a premature infant with a vulnerable immune system. So, I come to encourage the board to consider to continue the mask mandate through the stated date and even beyond if, if necessary. I'm a scientist by, by trade in education and I believe in data and scientific facts. And there's numerous reports and studies that show that mask use, we understand it's not a hundred percent, but it's the best preventative measure we have at our disposal at this time. So, I would encourage you to take that under consideration. And as I've been sitting here in this auditorium this evening, I've received a text that an acquaintance has just died from COVID. That is just the evidence that we need, that COVID is real, is serious, and it is deadly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson. Next is, uh, Ms. Natalie Hodges.
I'm Natalie Hodges and, um, I have one daughter in the school system. I agree with everything everybody has said tonight. We, my husband and I support the mask mandate. We really support in-person learning. These kids have got to be around their peers. They have got to be in front of teachers. The teachers are those that are trained to teach these kids. I know I can't do it. I can't survive another virtual. I'll tell you right now. Now, if you need help with coding or anything like that, come to me, we give you issues. I can't teach my child. But they learn. You know, when they went virtual before, my child is strong academically. And when she came back and the thaw and tested, she regressed. They all backed, scared me to death. We don't want that. We're parents, we want our kids healthy, we want our kids safe, we want our kids to grow and learn. So, I support the mask mandate. Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Hodges, last on the list is Mr. Joseph Floyd.
Joseph Floyd, uh, I'm sure as y'all can tell, I'm not wearing a mask, so I'm going to be the only one that is opposite of everybody in here, I guess. Um, I talked to several people that did support it. The, you know, making the mask mandate to be the parental choice, I think that's how it should be. I have a second grader that gets in my truck every afternoon with her hands in her head because she, she's got terrible headaches every day. She goes home and lays on the couch and, uh, she don't ride a bicycle, she don't want to ride the gator, she don't want to go feed the horses because her head's killing her because she's wearing a mask all day. My thing is, is they have to wear these masks all day in school, but then they go get their lunch and they come back in the classroom and they sit down in the same desk and take their mask off and eat for twenty minutes with no mask on. Or is this COVID virus that smart, did China do that good of a job at designing it that it knows that it cannot infect a kid during lunch in the same desk that they sit in all day? I noticed everybody that wears a mask in here tonight, when they came up here, they pulled it off to speak. Can you not catch it standing here talking? Does it, is this virus that smart? I do not care who wears a mask and it's your personal choice. You have that freedom. That's why we live in America. If you want to wear the mask, if you want your kids to wear the mask, let them wear the mask. Tell them to go to school, keep the mask on, but it should be our choice. School boards don't raise our kids, we do. And I'm telling everybody in here right now, the last thing I'm going to say is, is in the morning, I will send both of my kids to this Headland Elementary School and they will not have a mask. And if that school turns my kids around, I will take other actions. Because that should be my choice to raise my kids, to wear a mask whether they want to or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Again, thank you, everybody who, uh, who signed up to speak for, uh, letting the, uh, school board and the community know your views. Uh, we appreciate your, your, uh, input and we, we value everyone's opinion. And, uh, and, and thank you for the way in which it was handled. We certainly appreciate that more than we can say. We have a, a big agenda tonight. Uh, we're, we're proud to be at, at Headland High School. We do these sort of traveling road shows all along to showcase the schools in our system. We've been to, uh, Headland Middle School and we've been to Apple High School. And, uh, now we're at, at Headland High School and, uh, I'm glad that we had the, the community, community support, uh, here. And so, what we'll do now is move into item number three on the agenda, which is the superintendent's report and the monthly financial reports. And the superintendent will then discuss the folks that we have from the Leo Club here at the high school.
Okay, um, if you have not checked out, um, yesterday on our Facebook page, I put out a video because I know that it has been a hot topic over the last, um, few weeks. And so, if you have not checked out, uh, go to Henry County Schools Facebook page and watch. Uh, you will see where I'm talking about the Alabama Department of Public Health guidelines that, um, we are charged to, um, to follow. And with that being said, um, over the weeks that we have been in school, um, because I know that a lot of people have probably wanted to know, but we've dropped from, and the main thing that we're looking at, our positive numbers have dropped from seventy-six from the first week of school to thirty-one. But when you look at our quarantine, which is the kids that are in close contact, and at the beginning, they were out for fourteen days. We did reduce because we were looking at, um, the data and it showed that, um, we could quarantine at ten days and we were trying to keep kids in schools. Uh, we went from four hundred and seventy-four and we're at twenty-nine students that are under quarantine at this time in Henry County. And as I have said, um, multiple times, my job is to ensure that we have the best education for our kids. And face-to-face education is, uh, the best, uh, platform for our students because those teachers are the X-factor, uh, and as several parents have talked about. Now, uh, we will look again, as we talked about last week, October the fourth, and may look at different things at that time. Um, I am not a component of saying that this needs to be a year long. I think you look at your data and you stay fluid as far as what is going on and you base it off of, back to those guidelines that we're charged with. And, and regardless if we're for masks or not for masks, that, you know, that's pretty much what our guidelines are. Um, also, as Mr. McCrany said, every, uh, and we will be visiting the other schools, but we try to spotlight, um, something great that's going on in our schools. And I'm so proud, and I just want to say, I'm so proud to have so many people here because I want you to see the good things that are going on. A lot of times, and I'll take full responsibility, sometimes we don't promote ourselves in education, um, as good as we should because we have a lot of great things going on in Henry County Schools. So, with that being said, uh, when I talked with Mr. Bradford about something that he wanted to spotlight, he talks about the Leo Club, which is under the umbrella of the Lions Club. And I know a lot of you are familiar with the Lions Club and all the great things that they do in Headland. Um, and that's the chapter that you follow under. We have sponsor Stephanie Wilson, we have Megs Roberts, Grant Jenkins, Tatiana Persons, Jada Blackman, Mary, uh, Catherine Parker, that are here to represent and to talk about some things that they're going to be doing this school year. So, at this time, if you will, uh, you can come up and we're going to ask that you come to this podium up here so that you can be heard. And I want you to address our public, that's it.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Wilson. Super excited to be the sponsor of the Leo Club. This is our third year being a Leo Club. Um, have a great sponsorship with the Lions Club. As a matter of fact, um, my president, Megs Roberts, and I are going to skedaddle when we get done so we can go to the Lions meeting and, and give a presentation there as well. And without further ado, I'm going to introduce Megs Roberts. He is my president, um, doing a wonderful job. And he will in turn introduce each of the other officers.
Good evening. I would like to take a moment and thank Mr. Bradford and Mrs. Beasley and the rest of the Henry County School Board for giving me and my fellow officers this opportunity to share a little bit, a little insight on what the Leo Club is and what we do. As Mrs. Wilson said, my name is Megs Roberts. I'm a senior here at Headland High School and I serve as a very active member of the student body. Currently, I serve as the president of the Leo Club and the National Honor Society. But tonight, I've come to share a little bit about the Leo Club and why this organization is so essential to our students. The Leo Club is a community service club that is a youth branch of the Lions Club. Our organization currently consists of thirty-two members. Our club strives to reach out to various groups of people in and around Headland, Alabama. I joined the Leo Club when I was in tenth grade. It changed my perspective on what the word "community" meant. In my first year, we participated in many different service projects, such as Christmas caroling in the nursing homes, uh, doing a, hosting a canned food drive, and many other events. Last year, uh, COVID-19 hit and it hit us hard. Um, our, our attendance dropped, um, but yet we still stayed versatile and we stayed active. Um, although we are and we still will be, um, in a global pandemic for a while, um, we were able to do one community service project and that was to send Valentine's cards to the, to the local nursing homes, Zoya Court. That same year, I was also elected president-elect for this year of the Leo Club. This year, I, along with my other outstanding officers of the Leo Club, will come together and give our members a year of service, fellowship, and fun. After all, Leo does stand for Leadership Experience Opportunities. I believe that with the support of this outstanding board and members of our community, we can change the lives of our students one by one and day by, and day by day. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite Mary Catherine Parker to speak on her roles as president-elect of our Leo Club.
Good evening. I'm Mary Catherine Parker and I'm the president-elect of the Leo Club for this year and I will be president my senior year of high school. One thing that drew me to be the president-elect was the leadership. My parents have both taught me that leadership is a big thing growing up and it is one thing that really like touches my heart. My mom is actually the director of Vivian B. Adams School, which deals with people in need. And she has taught me that the best way to help people like that is to give back and that is one thing that I've wanted to do in high school. I am, I am secretary of SGA this year. I am vice president of the class officers for eleventh grade and I'm also president-elect for the Leo Club. I'm also involved in more clubs and hopefully they'll still be doing them this year as long with FBLA and HOSA. And one thing that I want to do as president-elect and hopefully do as president next year is be involved more with people in need in our community. I think that is one thing in our school that really needs help is that there's not enough people that are involved in things like this. And it is one thing in our world right now that we really need. Although there is a pandemic going on, we need to wear masks and keep continuing to help our community so we can do community service projects like this. And as president-elect next year, I really want to encourage a lot more people at our school to do things like this because it does help a great deal in our community. And I think one thing that I really want to spotlight is my mom's school next year because it is such a big part of who I am. And it's something that really touches my heart when I see somebody that is in need and they're getting help from others, especially people my age. It is a big deal to me because there are some people my age that don't feel that they need to help people in need. And that's why I want to be president-elect, to help others and show others that there is a bigger side to everything that we do in high school and that the main thing is the community service. Thank you. And now I'll introduce Grant Jenkins, our vice president.
Um, my name is Grant Jenkins. Um, I'm the vice president of the Leo Club and I'm here to talk about our community service opportunities. So, as was stated, last year we didn't get to do a whole lot of community service, but this year we're hoping to do a, a lot more. So, currently we're working on getting a food drive set, a canned food drive set up for the school and classrooms. And hopefully throughout the year, we're going to do more stuff such as work at the, uh, local, Charmed, the local animal shelter and other things hopefully throughout the year. And that is, um, one of the main goals of the Leo Club is to help the commu-, help out the community in many different ways. Now, I'm going to introduce our treasurer, Jayden Blackman.
Good evening, every, everyone. My name is Jayden Blackman and I'm a senior here at Headland High School and I'm the Leo Club treasurer. Um, as the treasurer, I, um, deal with like the financial and like the money with like all the, um, like things that we do at like a part of Leo Club. Um, I joined Leo Club when I was in tenth grade and, um, I've joined, I've, I've enjoyed every second of it. It, um, it really does bring us together like as a family. And, um, we do things together and we just involve ourselves in the community. And, uh, I feel like the community, like, um, enjoys us being involved with them as well. Just, um, being able to implement like high school students with grown people and just, um, helping each other, bring our community together as a whole. Um, now I will, um, introduce Tatiana Person. She's our event coordinator.
Hello, my name is Tatiana Person. I am a senior and also I am the Leo's Club event coordinator. My position contains, my position contains of coming together with my fellow officers to plan different social service activities. The Leo Club is very important to the community. We have an event coming up that's the full can, I mean, the, the canned food drive. And as a coordinator, my job would be to spread the word by posting little posters around the school, telling classmates and things like that and more. I am more happy to be a part of the Leo Club this year. And I look forward to creating an experience and bringing vision to life.
Great job. And we thank you for your focus. And we know that the leadership skills that you are learning today will carry out, um, throughout your life. And we appreciate, um, Ms. Stephan-, Stephanie Wilson for the job that she does as a concern and making it very successful in, um, in Club. In addition, um, all of the financial, um, reports have been reconciled and, um, that's really all that I have.
Ms. Andrews, do you have anything?
Um, financial, we're having a backup in July. And I think we failed to keep that up on the agenda in, um, the thirtieth. July's end of balance was three million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars, thirty-nine cents, which is one point eight five months for sure. And August, um... And August, um, thirty-first is three million, six hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars, eighty-five cents. And that's a two point eighty-three. And also the, uh, paybacks and cash.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, item number four, recommend the board approve the July and August two thousand twenty-one bank reconciliations as presented. Motion by Mr. Watson, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bush, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Item number five, recommend the board approve the fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty-two budget. Motion? Motion by Mr. Watson, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bush or Ms. Wiggins? Ms. Wiggins? Discussion?
This is the budget that, um, Ms. Andrews went over, uh, back, um, today and then last week at the work session.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Well, we have, uh, four in favor, Mr. Davis?
Substance.
Mr. Davis sustains. Item number six, recommend the board approve the board meeting minutes of August the second and August the twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Get a motion?
No.
Motion by Ms. Bush, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson?
Davis.
Mr. Davis, I'm sorry. Uh, any discussion?
This is our special call and our regular board meeting from August.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Item number seven, recommend the board approve the Alabama trust for boards of education, general liability errors and omissionist liability fund coverage for six hundred and eighteen dollars for the two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two school year. Motion by Mr. Watson, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wiggins, any discussion?
This comes up every year, you know, I brought it up at the work session, um, and it's due on October.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Item number eight, recommend the board approve, uh, purchase of property beside Headland, Headland Elementary School parking lot for a total value of ninety thousand dollars. You have a motion? Motion by Mr. Watson, do you have a second? Second by Mr. Davis, any discussion?
Okay, and this will be, uh, when you vote for this, this is going to be pending that, um, the deed is clear and that it is resolved from residential to commercial. And Ms. Campbell and I had spoke about this and, and she worked with me on the wording of this so that we, it's not binding us into that.
Sure. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Item number nine, recommend the board approve Spencer Danzy to complete a title search and any related closing documents for purchase of property beside Headland Elementary School parking lot. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Wiggins, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bush, any discussion?
Uh, Ms. Campbell, uh, she has reached out to, uh, Mr. Danzy and he is willing to do this, um, and Ms. Campbell, you're online, aren't you? Ms. Campbell?
Uh, I'm here, I was on mute. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm here and, uh, I did talk to Mr. Danzy. He is willing to do the work and he has, uh, uh, given us a quote of what that work cost.
Okay.
And that was, did, am I correct in saying it was six hundred and fifty dollars?
Uh, six hundred and fifty dollars to take care of the closing expenses and if the board wants title insurance, that will be an additional three hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, he will actually be doing a title search for you and, uh, you know, would have checked all of the ins and outs, so the, the, uh, title insurance is, uh, optional if the board chooses to have that done.
I would recommend that we do get title insurance. All right, now we have, we have a motion and a second on item number nine. All in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Item number ten, recommend the board approve the speech occupational and physical therapy agreements with Summer Law Therapy Services for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. Motion by Mr. Watson, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis, any discussion?
I talked about this at the work session, uh, this is for our related services, um, with our special education.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Item number eleven, recommend the board approve the behavioral therapy agreement with child and family services of Southeast Alabama for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
Make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Bush, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wiggins, any discussion?
Um, I also talked about this at the work session. This is our behavior specialists that work with, um, our special ed- education students. So this is their contract that's, uh, that comes up in October.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Item eleven is approved unanimously. Item twelve, recommend the board approve the special education consultant agreement with Andrew Walker for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. Get a motion? Motion by Mr. Watson, do you have a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
I mentioned this also at the work session. Um, we typically, um, contract with a psychometrist that does testing uh, because in years past we had two psychometrists and now we are, uh, only have one. And so we do not have a psychometrist to do, uh, the contract work. Uh, and this person would be, um, putting in the paperwork from the testing.
So contract, you have it for how many hours per week?
Yes, it's ten hours per week. At twenty-five dollars an hour. Uh, wait, it may be thirty dollars an hour because that's what our service is.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Item thirteen, recommend the board approve the rec- recommend the board approve the Snyder Electric Energy Services contract in the amount of one hundred fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. You have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson, discussion?
Okay, this would be paid through Esser, uh, money, that round two of Esser money that we have been approved for. And, uh, we have had Snyder to talk at, uh, work sessions and have had Mr. Jones, our technology, um, coordinator, speak and this would help shore up, um, where we're still, um, working off of Windows seven. So it would be an upgrade. The contract is up with Snyder is twenty twenty-five. So we, we can't go with another company, you know, that was a question, um, that was talked about because that, um, was in twenty-ten that the contract went in with Snyder and it comes up twenty twenty-five.
My question, uh, why did we run into such a long contract?
Okay, that was before my time as superintendent, so.
It was because it get paid back, I mean, it was the money situation.
I, I was, I was a principal at that time. I was a principal at, um, at that time and, uh, at the middle school and what was relayed to me was that the cost savings based off of the energy, the electric, uh, because we had so many classrooms where teachers were, um, lowering the air conditioning and so it regulated it and it would, uh, it would all, it would offset those costs. That was twenty-ten to twenty twenty-five.
When you have that long of a contract, you take away the competition, the competition will bring the prices down. That was a mistake, I, I'll just say it.
Like I said, that was before my time, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, all in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Item number fourteen, recommend the board approve the personnel recommendation attached here to exhibit A and made a part hereof. Get a motion? Motion by Mr. Watson, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bush, any discussion?
I talked about this at the works, work session also and, um, this will be for this school year, so it would be at the end of the school year that that would be. And they're not using, whereas you see, um, what it, it has out beside and then in parentheses, that's what she actually does. They're not using that supplement and so that's how that would be paid.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Item fifteen, recommend the board approve the revised salary schedule attached here to exhibit B and made a part hereof. Motion by Ms. Bush, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wiggins, any discussion?
Okay, I know that we talked about this at the work session and that our assistant coaches, we were not paying across the board for our varsity, whether it be girls' or boys' sports. And so in order to adjust that, then we increased to be on the, uh, that all assistant coaches at the varsity level, um, would be paid at the same rate.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Item number sixteen, recommend the board approve the revised two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two scholastic calendar attached here to exhibit C and made a part hereof.
Make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Wiggins, do you have a second? Second by Mr. Davis, any discussion?
If you remember at the work session, I talked about, you know, in years past, we always kinda had to work with the civic center because that's when Headland High School, um, whenever they could secure the civic center is when their graduation kinda dictated it. And so now that we're using our own facilities, uh, you know, we talked about maybe doing it all on the same day. And so that would be the, um, the amendment. And giving them enough time because I think with us being in early September, they would have enough time in May to make any adjustments that needed to be made.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All in favor, please raise your hand. Four, uh, yes, Mr. Davis?
Substance.
Mr. Davis sustains. That's everything we have on the agenda, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.